Okay, let's, we had just a slight delay because we had a late report that's on our agenda, but the actual paperwork was just, just came in and we had to get a copy of it and get it on our system. And let me get started here. Paul, you're on the phone, Paul, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Paul Howe is on the phone, one of our board members, he could not be here. And, but he'll be here throughout for the meeting, which will help us all. As soon as I get this up, it's running, it's clicking, we'll get started. Okay, folks, we're okay to start now. Hello, we're about ready to start, we're running 12 minutes late. But we have Paul Howe, our member joining us on the phone. And my name is Al Cox, I'm the club president, the other board member here is Chad Sigmund and our general manager, Jason Myers, I don't know, Chief of the Council, Tim Stranko, that's who's sitting in front here, or who's not sitting here. Want to call the meeting to order, and at this time I have a pledge of allegiance, and Chad, would you leave it for us?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Formally, we'll do the roll call, let's do it, Mr. Sigmund, here, Mr. Howe, Paul. I mean, it's probably lost, thank you. Hello, we got to make sure that we didn't lose him now.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Paul, check his phone, we might, okay, there he is. I simply lost your connection for a second.
You don't hear my background noise?
Well, I hear it, because he's working his job and been here. Okay, and I'm here, so we do have our total board member here. At this point, we're going to go into a public hearing, and this is for the pending rate increase we have. I'll read the ordinance title, it's ordinance number 2825-01, an ordinance setting forth the rates, fees, charges for service to customers of the water work system of the Clarksburg Water Board, Harrison County, West Virginia. At this time, we're going to have our public hearing, and I'll declare the public hearing open at this point for comments both for and against the rate increase. We will take people's comments, just if you really want to speak, you can raise your hand, I think we have a list maybe, or not?
Right here, yeah.
Okay, we'll take it in the order people signed up, you want to give me that, or you want to?
Yes.
Paula?
That's me.
And the procedure will be this, it is a hearing, you've got five minutes, and the other thing too is it's not a debate or a question and answer session, it's what they call a hearing, something near your comments. So you have the floor.
Thank you, I don't usually do things like this.
It's okay, feel comfortable.
I do feel comfortable, and I don't mean to be mean, I don't usually say mean things. But Mr. Howe, you and Mr. Cox, and I don't know how long Mr. Sigmund's been on this board. Okay, you've been here how long, 30 years?
No, no.
Been here a long time.
Twenty-five years.
Long time.
I've been, I liked to, you know.
And Mr. Howe too, he's been here a while.
Yes.
And I must say, then I'm very sad that the board and the old managers that were here did no pre-planning for the system, nothing was done, until someone filed a lawsuit about the lead tap, which you knew they were there. Why now are we running around like some crazy people, trying to do everything that should have been slowly been done with the proper planning, instead of everything of this? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I do.
Does that make sense? Companies plan, this board should have planned for this. I've been a resident here, I've lived on Elm Street for 10 years, and I've lived on Carr Avenue since my son was born, he's 32. Nothing's been done to the system, and I'm very disappointed in the management of this water board. And I don't think that because you guys are having a crisis now, that we should have to pay for your mismanagement. Yes, I know, we have to pay for our water, I know we have to pay for upkeep. But I'm very disappointed in this water board for its lack of pre-planning to serve the citizens of the city, and only under duress of lead taps did something get done, or it probably would still be the same way. Now, I know the gas company is tearing up the streets too because of that man getting killed. I worked for CNGT in audiovisual for 14 years. My job was eliminated in 99. I used to go to all the big meetings, Pope gas lines have been leaking forever, they knew it. Dominion came in, bought them out, they sold it, sold it, sold it, now the gas company's doing the same thing. Oh my God, we got to tear everything up. I just paid $1,700 because the front axles on my car are leaking from these roads. Be it the gas company or you. I have been begging for years because I live off of Carr Avenue. And from Monticello up to my street, the winters, there have been holes in that street. And I have begged the state, I've begged you, I've called numerous people, we can't fix it till the taps are changed. Look, he should have changed the taps and paved the road. Roads get torn up as soon as they're fixed anyway. Are you going to guarantee me that these roads, once you pave them, are never going to be torn up again? Of course not, that's unreasonable. But we, the people of the city, are suffering with these roads, be it the gas company, the water company, whatever. And I don't understand why you didn't take this in an orderly fashion. Start down Chestnut Street, lay your line, right. Okay, let's take it over to Northview, let's compact all of our energy in one spot. Let's fix this area, get it all done, pave it. Okay, let's run the main to the next section of the city. Okay, go on up, let's get everybody's taps changed, get the lines in, pave it, streets are fixed. But now, whether you say it's the gas company or you, this town from one end to the other is a nightmare. And what's happened to these lines that are in the ground when they're not paving them over? I'm watching buses and trash trucks, and I know the lines are deep, but all that driving and wait on a terribly patched job is not good for the infrastructure we're paying for. Have you ever thought about that? Am I making sense?
Yes.
And I'm making sense.
Listening to you, I'm, go ahead, you are.
I mean, it's just common sense, a third grader could have planned this out though, I swear. That's all I have to say, that I'm just very disappointed in you and the board and everybody who has to do with this craziness, because we're suffering now. And now on top of that, the damage to our cars, you want to raise our rates. And knowing that 81% people pay more does not make me feel better, it makes me sorry for them. So don't use that, oh well, they're paying more, so we should feel lucky, that doesn't work. That's, that's the blanking, I don't want to play the blank.
Five minutes, thank you, thank you, next person.
The next one is Sammy, Sammy Moore.
Yes.
Yes, Sam.
Well, this lady here, she got a lot of good voice, because see, from what I gather and what I see, great, the music creates money. And you have really got confused, confused around you, I mean, it's costing everybody money but you, you're making money. You, the state, the city, you're all making money, it's costing us money. Every time we turn a corner, the road's blocked, what are you going to do? And then you got four guys standing around and one guy working, almost on every corner, it never failed. And when you do fix something, it's halfway done, it ain't done right. I just don't get it, man, I lived in Texas for 40 years, things are cheaper there than they are here, you're Texas, this. I just don't get it. And I think you ought to do a lot better job, you, you need a plan, definitely, because the guy you got, you got a third grade education, I guess, I don't know, bro. That's about all I got to say.
Thank you, Sam, next person.
Kerry Thompson?
I'll pass, never mind, okay.
I'm pissed off.
Next person.
Let's see. Channel 5 News, you don't want to talk to anything? Jake Styles, you're, no. Jennifer, now that's down.
Hold on, I put my name on there, I'd like to speak, Anthony Olivito. Did I not write on the right paper or what?
I think he was right behind me.
You're blank, but I'll, I'll put you down as yes.
Okay. I didn't know you had to put yes, I thought you just had to sign it. All right, okay, Anthony, of course, God darn, I lived here all my life, and I remember when this place was brand new in 90. 1990, this was a brand new water board with new water mains going up the hill with a new number one water main going all the way to town. All right, and I'm definitely against this rate hike, because I've called Public Service Commission about these expenditures. Now, of course, me and Al Cox ran against each other back in 2000, because we were buying for a water tanks. I wanted to put them back on Chestnut Street, he wanted to put them up on South Second, right, am I right?
Here's, I had nothing to do with South Second Street.
Well.
On my water board.
Right here.
I shouldn't be talking to you, go ahead.
Okay, but anyway, they constructed this concrete water tank on South Second at the wrong elevation. A 2 million gallon water tank is only filling up halfway, okay. Now they're telling me it's only 750,000 gallons. And now we got to change out the water lines that were brand new, that they put in back in 2009. Out here on Chestnut Street, coming down Ryan, was already done. You might not remember, but I did, I've been falling the bouncing ball. Now I hear that we're going to change the the number one water mains configuration. Instead of coming parallel behind Ryan Street, we're going to come down off Kramer.
Correct.
Correct, okay, we're coming down, we're coming out, and then we got to go back up. Right there on, off above Chestnut Street, where the old water tanks that used to be, and you want to come towards Clarksburg. Okay, we're, we're coming Kramer, then we got to go back up the hill. Instead of coming down off Van Buren, somebody decided they want to close the roadway. They don't want that main coming back through there, that main's new, and we got to change it out again? Because we got YMCA that's threatening the whole area with the storm drains and causing a slip. What happens when we come up above 1 million gallons on that water tank? We're sending pressure back down, because I seen the main blow out down here. Okay, you guys decided that you wanted to do a $60 million upgrade and change it out again, when it was brand new back in 90. And you got the city to bond it out. But you had to use a city manager that's from out of the country, that's not even from the United States. So right there, I'm thinking, this is a, something doesn't die right here. And I done talked to the Public Service Commission, I said, this is way inflated, we're getting ready to head into a recession. You know, the economy's bad. People shouldn't have to pay for this. Now, when the system was brand new back in 90, this is what my water bill was. When everything was brand new and we had four water tanks sitting on Chestnut Street, was $29. Now we've got to start over again, and we're heading to the, we're heading to the moon on the water bill. And of course, it's, they tell me it's cheaper here in Clarksburg than it is in surrounding areas, because you got to push the water farther away. Some people have got $200.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, 30 seconds, I'm going to wrap this up. Instead of spending $3 million on one water tank that doesn't fill up all the way, we could have bought four steel water tanks and put them at the correct elevation on Chestnut Street, and we would have been, had quality water.
Mismanagement.
All right, I must cut it off at that, right there.
I'm against this water rate.
Thank you, you've got a chance to speak, thank you, okay.
But I'm definitely against the water rate hike.
Thank you, Anthony, thank you very much. Any other people wanting to speak?
How's the elderly people's place?
Wait, wait, let's say.
Yeah, really.
You, you, when you stand up and if you want to speak. We want everybody to speak their piece who signed up.
Well, I'm on disability.
And what's your name again?
Kerry Thompson.
Okay.
And all the, business of all the streets, like working in all these places, they're torched so bad, I mean, I've already tore up my car three times. I don't make much money because I can't work anymore, but I can get back to work, we have to anyway, trying to, when Dr. Reston Gay. But anyway, it's just getting worse and worse every year. Only to a gas company, yes, everyone wants their increase by February, I would say 33%. And now you guys coming up, you guys want another hike, you just got one last year. I mean, people just can't pay for this anymore, it's outrageous. Especially if all our streets tore up, I mean, my car been tore up twice already. I mean, this is getting out of hand, you got to, this has got to come to a stop. On how, I don't even know how the elderly people have to pay their bills.
Thank you.
That's all I got to say.
I appreciate your concerns, now anybody else wanting to speak that haven't spoken?
Also, people can't pay the bills.
Okay, why now?
Yeah.
Do you want to say, I don't mind people, honestly, I believe in openness, you're really supposed to sign up.
I didn't sign up to speak.
But that's okay, we have to put your name in there.
Carolyn Bell.
Okay, Carolyn, you're in there, thank you, Carolyn.
I live on Vermont Avenue. A house I live in, my grandmother built, 1937. So no family has been in that house. And the water line on that street, right in front of the house, has broken five times over the years, five times. That's one of the oldest lines in the city, I know that, because Vermont Avenue originally was Daisy Street. Yeah, well, it was, and I could not understand why that street could not have had a whole new line way back whenever. Now, you think my five lines right there? Two more down the street, one more up in the next block. They paved that second block, the first block, off of Buchanan, and no more than paved it, they had to tear it up, but two places, water line broke. It is a very, very, very old line. And my other comment is that I'm not blaming him. Something should have been done a long time ago, a little at a time. But I remember my father telling me that that water line in front of our house broke on Christmas Eve back in the 80s. It was blessed cold, and so he had my mother make a pot of coffee and took it out to all those guys. And they did appreciate it, but it was freezing cold, and one of the guys made a comment, you know, we had a line break just the other day out by the hospital, the old hospital. He said, we were overtaken with gas. What does that tell you, okay? I, this city is getting very old, I do not mind telling you, I am 86 years old. And I know, some people say I don't look quite that old. But I am, I'm 86, I was born here, I did not grow up here, I grew up in Weirton. But I came back here in 1988 because my family was coming here to live again. And it's a great city, but older people, I don't know how they could pay the bills. I really don't, because they're all on welfare. I, I'm not really on welfare, but I do receive a check, but it's not that great. And I taught in this county for 15 years, so I know what's going on in some cases. And I don't know, I know Chad. Yeah, and, but I just wanted to say that, and I'm really not blaming this board here completely, uh-uh. But I will say this one thing about Northview. I was over there the other day, and they paved up West Virginia. That's the worst job I've seen in the city, those people don't deserve that. It's, oh, and a piece is here, and then there's another piece on top, and, and another piece, it's terrible. And I don't live in Northview, but the children that I taught came from Northview, so I know a lot of families in there now. But that's the worst I've seen anywhere, and I will tell you, these men have worked hard this summer, they had that heat, they had to put tents up, and I went across the street one day, and the guy helped me, he said, I don't want you to fall on this, this is not real smooth. And he was very nice and very polite. I just wanted to say that because I've seen them working, and I know what you're tearing up and moving here and doing that. I don't know if it's the way to do it, but that must be, but anyhow, I just wanted to say, why wasn't Vermont Avenue a new line? Gee, my dad's been died, dead since 1990, so it had to be in the 80s and the 70s that those lines were breaking. And one has broken in the last five years. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn, okay, anybody else wanting to speak for, or events? Okay, I have a motion to close the hearing.
Did you do it, did you want to respond to any?
No.
Now, all, all I want to say is, I would love to have a meeting with you.
Close the public hearing. Okay, I've got the procedure in hand.
Okay, because I definitely want to.
The first thing, okay. Procedure is, it's a public hearing, the next step is, somebody closes the hearing. Since everybody had a chance to speak, you move a motion to close it, Paul?
I'll move to close the meeting.
Okay, there's a motion, and for a discussion hearing, now on, please say aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is now closed, now we got a comment period, if any of the people or manager or anybody wants to respond.
Yes, I'll be more than happy to sit down with you, I even have one of our fresh engineers there, answer all your questions, some of the stuff you said is, is on par. One of those things are being fixed, and I'd like to go over with some of the things.
You're addressing who now? Astral Vito. He's pointing out that way, several people spoke, I wonder who.
Astral Vito, more than happy to sit down with you. We want to be transparent, we want to show you while we're doing what we're doing.
Okay.
And it looks like you, you've got Hannah Fleming, so you're, you're very educated.
Yes, I've been.
And you may get.
Involved with the water plant from the, from the get-go.
And you may give me some information that I'll, I'll event your real ears.
All right, because.
So we can have a good conversation, you can maybe give me some information that I don't have, and I can give you something you don't have. I'm very transparent, always available, but I thank you for your comments.
One thing about it, we are very transparent, we don't hide anything, our meetings are public, matter of fact, we even have them recorded now. You can go on the internet and watch our meetings, you'll watch today's meeting, you can watch it, so everything we do is here, very open. We love comments, we like people talking to us, we wish more people would come to our meetings, because we have to make decisions and so on. And we are in very, very challenging times, but we're addressing it. You want to say anything at this point?
Yeah, I just want to say, I do agree that with, in the past, that the roads should have been, the lines replaced a little bit of the time, rather than, you know, having to do that, one reason is, you know, was it the state that really didn't mandate, wasn't enforced, but it's still really no excuse, so the lead lines, everyone knows how bad that is, and that should have been replaced. But we're, we are where we are, we can't go back in the past. It's luckily, thank goodness, we're able to receive grants at this time, $24 million, $25 million in grants. We just have to move forward, get this done, get it replaced, I know no one likes rate increases, I don't like any rate increases. But we have to do it, has to be replaced, we have 10 years to do it. I mean, what's your other alternative, leave them in there? I mean, we can't, that's, I mean, I have, we all have, we want the best quality of water and get these lead lines out, so we can move forward with the best infrastructure, so. Again, I'm sorry, we have to raise the rates, but it is what it is.
Paul, do you have anything you'd like to say, Paul?
No, other than I think Jason Myers has done a fantastic job getting grant money for this program, and also getting the city involved with the gas company, and, you know, doing all this at once, there's all, there's going to be money savings with the paving and, you know, I know it's a big headache, but it's coming really nice when it's finished, so Jason, great job.
Yeah. And I'll go last, we had a public meeting last night, an information meeting, several questions were asked, and repeated questions you asked, and so on. Just so I can at least, I've been here the longest on the board, so many people keep re-electing me, I think they have confidence in me. And you look at our rate structure over the years, we have low rates, he just said, back in 1990, the late rate was $29. Our base rate right now is $29.98, so we, something's wrong in that figure, but whatever. But anyway, as far as why we're doing things piecemeal, or why didn't we do it a long time ago? We've made improvements here, and we've replaced lines in certain streets in the town, we've removed lead lines, you know, as we went along in places, as we identified, and so. Lead lines were something they used in the early part of the century, the early 1900s, 1919s, 20s, 30s, 40s, up into the 50s, up into the 80s. But our board has not put a lead service line in since the early 1950s, and that's the line that goes from the main water line to your meter. That's where the lead service lines are. So that's, that came along in 1986, the federal government came out and said, we do not want people putting any more lead service lines in. They didn't make any mandates, saying, well, these are really dangerous, the difference is, it's like lead in paint, they had you take it out. They said, water boards don't put any more lead lines in, that's 1986. Come along 1920 round, now we've been removing some of that lines as we go along, anytime we change a line out on the street, it's not a few hundred dollars or a few thousand, it takes a lot of money. But we have other things we've been doing, and I can give you a longer list of improvements we've made here, that saved our red rate payers money. That's why we've been able to keep the rates where they are, which is, and some people say, I don't care if they're in the bottom 20% of rates in the state, I think people should care. There are people in this county who pay base rates much more than a rate, and we've worked hard to keep our rates low and running a quality plant, good water, and a good distribution system. So we've been going along doing that, and then in 2021, we had a report of three children in this community who had some lead in their blood. Now, this is determined as they go to their doctor or somebody, and they find an elevated amount of lead. They are required, the doctors or medical people, to report that to the state health department, not the local health department. The local health department didn't even know this happened. So we got a notification about these three incidents, and we responded quickly, our crews went out, checked everything, and so on. None of those children got sick or were sick, but they did have the elevated blood level. That point, the federal government was looking at discuss, it was reported to the state health department, they notified the EPA and so on, and then they notified us that they think we ought to remove the lead lines. In the past, there was no urgency, we were taking them out as we went along, as we removed them. But in 2021, we got this mandate from the federal government, they want all lead lines out across the country, there's 9,900,000 of them. It's going to cost much money to do it. So what we did, we responded right away, and you, my smirk and smile about it, but this is a factual statement. So when they told us on the weekend before July 4th about this lead line issue, and our attorney will validate this too, they gave us three days to notify everybody who has a lead line, known and unknown, to have, what's going on, which we had to do. And then within five days, we had to provide alternate drinking water, and that's why we had 8,000 people, because we don't know who had lead lines and who didn't. Back in 1920, 30s, there weren't computers that tracked all this stuff, our people had to take boxes and boxes of old service orders, and we started to work on it. We brought the National Guard in to help us distribute water, because we had to do it. The federal government said to us, EPA, if you don't complete these things within so many days, a $25,000 a day fine. Complete these things within so many days, a twenty-five thousand dollar a day fine. It wasn't against us, that's just the way they proceed to get you to move on it. And we responded quickly. And it took us time to, we kept providing the water with filters. In the meantime, we're going to take the lines out because it's a mandate. We have a period of so many years to do it. So now we have a sense of urgency. That's why we're doing it now. So our manager, our engineering firm and people said, gee, this is going to cost a lot of money. So we went to work with all the federal people, state people, some looking where we could get free money. We got over twenty-four million dollars in grants and nobody has to pay back. And we had another thirty-five million, thirty-four point some million. That we had to get loans on. Now, the loan rates were thirty to forty years at point-two-five to point-seven-five rate. That's below one percent over forty years. People say, well, how can you do a fifty-nine million dollar project and keep the rates so low? It's because of these people did their homework and we identified the money. So now you're in those, in that period, we're also, you just can't go out and start tearing things up. We had to go search, find out where the lead lines were. We did our homework and so on. And uh. And our manager and people went to work on that whole project, our engineering firms trying to design the program. The next thing is, how do you do it? We have so many years to get it done. We go just say, let's go do. Staley first. It takes a year or so, then let's go to the next place and do that next in this next place. It took too long. We hired four engineering firms to start working in multiple parts of the city to get this job done, get it over with. Now visualize this, we have to remove the lead service line, which is the little lines that go. From main line over to your house. So coming down and for instance, Vermont Avenue, if there's lead service lines on it. It wouldn't make sense for us to go in there and take the lead lines out. Because you've got all these cuts going across the street, your street's destroyed. In her case, we might as well remove that hundred-year-old line or eighty-year-old line. Because the street is open. So that was our plan of attack, take care of that. In the meantime, to solve the problem of the water pitchers and so on, we hired a firm. Uh, a very well-known, probably the best in the countries in Newport News, Virginia. And what they did, they're the same people that handled the Flint, Michigan thing. But we had nothing to do even remotely close to what happened in Flint. And so we started testing water, what we could do to stop lead from possibly leaching into water. We have lead service lines, they're about this big around, they go to your house. And they're very, and we look at them, they've been pretty good. So um, it's like buying a car. You might buy a car and they caught a lemon, it might have some flaws on it. We may had a line out there in nineteen twenty, we put in, may have caused a little lead to leach. It used to be they allowed fifty parts per billion lead. In your lines, they thought that was safe. Then they cut it to fifteen parts per billion. And we were below that standard, but the thing is, we wanted to go out and take care of this issue. So we hired this company and we started testing a thing called orthophosphate. And that's a product, it's a food nutrient. It's in a lot of your foods, your soft drinks and so on. And people are ingesting it all the time. The city of Fairmont and Morgantown have used orthophosphate in their system for a long time. And what that does, we introduce some of that into our system, just like chlorine or chemicals. And it coats the inside of lines to help prevent this breaking up of the lead or whatever the heavy metals are. But to get that, they had to do all kinds of testing. You know, to figure out what is the amount of orthophosphate we should use. And our plant superintendent and people, we worked on that a long time and we tested it. They got it down to an acceptable level. And then we ran it, worked beautifully throughout the city. And then on top of that, they said, now you no longer have to do the lead pitchers. That's where we are. And then now we're going by the neighborhoods to. Do the work. We're right now, we're almost finished with Heartland. And that's those streets, as soon as it's done, we will pave that area. People ask, well, when you do like Fourteenth Street or this street or that street, why can't you come in and pave it right away? Well, first of all, it's very costly. It's a thing called mobilization. That means they got to bring all this heavy equipment in and do that street, which inflates the cost. Then they have to come back and they do another street. We do a section of the town and then we pave it. We mill it up and pave it. In the interim, what we do, we go in and do the work and it's nasty. And we have to put rock and temporary patching down, that's why it's so bumping, bumpy. And we have a gentleman right here, Bobby Tenney, who sees that project. And uh, it's an ongoing thing. The other plus we did is. We are going to tear up the street. Well, the gas company's already been tearing streets up in Heartland and around town. Why don't, why don't we all work together? The city sewage lines have to be replaced. You see the storm drains, the water that fills up some streets on West Pike Street down by Wendy's and all that. So they want to correct their thing, it's in the street. We need to do it, the gas company needs to do it. The best thing to do is let's get it over one time. It's pain, one time, short term, the streets are disrupted. I hate it, I have to drive over. I hate to drive. Brock Oaks to Staley and you know, whatever, go over all that stuff. I hate the delays. I'm suffering with it the way you are, but there's really no alternative when you go digging up streets. We've asked people, what do you think we can do? What you should have done a long time ago, well, that inconvenience would have been there a long time ago too. So I think we do our homework. It's just. We're going forward to do this project. This rate increase we're doing now, the two dollars and seventy cents, has nothing whatsoever to do with the road projects, nothing. This is just to cover the cost, our inflation of all the expenses of running this plant. Equipment, the chemicals, the utility we pay. We have a lot of the things that every business does, we have to do that every year and it gets inflationary. And so we do our homework and we say, what's the minimum amount? We can do that, we need, we don't make money. We don't have shareholders. Our shareholders are the customers. That's who we're concerned about. So that's why we only ask for what we truly need. And that's what we do, our rates. That's why rates sometimes go up eighty cents. This happens, we have two dollars and seventy cents. Okay? And this is only for the operational thing, it's nothing to do with the roads. Now, I want to say one more thing about the twenty-nine dollars you're paying, that's a base rate. That's up to us, three thousand gallons you could use for that. Based on gallons used. And of course, you use a lot of water, pay more. I mean, factories pay thousands of dollars, of course, they have the income. I'm with you, the problem is, we have so many people in this town on fixed income. And over sixty-some percent of our people are on a base rate thing. So people said, well, let's give this group and we'll subsidize them. State says we have to treat people equally under a tariff program. So say if it costs, this is a figure, say it costs ten million dollars to run a plant. It doesn't cost, say ten million. We say, okay, what we'll do is, we're gonna give Anthony and this person, this person a break. We still have ten million we have to pay, so you put it on everybody else. You see what I'm saying? So they tried to design rates that are balanced and fair, looking at the lower income. And that's with the base rate. So you think about it. When I say our rate has nothing to do with the road program, it does. The rates you're paying right now, that twenty-nine eighty-four base. Pays for that fifty-nine million dollar project, plus our operating expenses and that twenty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. Now, I want to be honest with you. So we're now going to put the final phase, which means. We're in Northview, we're in Heartland-Staley, we're on Main Street, Clarksburg. And we've done Kramer Drive and out the Armory Road. That's our first project. We only have the second project and that's all the rest of the city. They're our direct customers, okay? That's the next phase. And that'll be done in the neighborhoods, we won't be on Main and Pike Street, although we'll tie in. And that's the next phase we have to do. Our people are designing that project, trying to figure out, you know, how to do it, looking what we've done. Putting the cost package together, seeking funding, trying to find grant money, trying to find loan money and so on. Then we can determine a rate. Because we're going to have to pay for that project. Our thing is, that's what we can do, do our homework, keep that as low as we can. But once we get that new rate, that this next rate will come up sometime the next year or so. We will still be in the lower tier of rates in the state of West Virginia, that's why people pay for water. Plus with that, when we introduce it, we plan, we've been talking about it, to phase it in in three years. Say that rate would come in at whatever it is, I'm just going to use a figure, three dollars. I don't, it may not be there, probably won't, but say it's three dollars. We charge a dollar the first year and the next year people adjust to another dollar and we get it. We've done this before, phased in a rate. And if you look in our rate history, you'll see a gap in there where we didn't raise any rates for, how many years, seven years, six years?
Well.
I can't remember.
About seven, that's when you all, when you all did it.
We had a rate. We didn't have any rate increases, you know why? Public Service Commission says you ought to look at your rates every three years and do the adjustments because of inflation. Well, but through our tight operation, we were able to do our water treatment plant without raising rates on people. I think that's good management, I really do. And so anyway. We, we have to do this, we don't have any choice. I guess we could say, let's ignore the lines, they're old, let them leak and so on, we can't do that. Oh, can we go out and cut people's salaries and employees? I guess we could do that, that's not going to happen. Can we lot our trucks or cars or vehicles or don't pay our bills? That's not going to happen. This is your water system, we have to manage it as you want us to manage it. Sometimes it's not right, sometimes it's hurtful. Lot of rumors go out there all the time that we have the highest rates in the country. That we're poisoning people, that we should have done this a long time ago. It all costs money, no matter when you do it. We've just decided to take it on since we have to tear the streets up. Let's go ahead and remove the main line. And that's the big thing. And it really, all the urgency came about when they said we had to take the lines out. Before, we could just take them out as a time and go along and do it straight here or there over fifty years. We didn't have that luxury. We are at the hands of the federal government, EPA people, and they told us, this is what you got to do. I guess we get turned our heads and say, minus twenty-five thousand dollars a day and let the system fall apart. That's the defense of doing this. I hate like that to raise the rates a dollar or two dollars and seventy cents. So that's the answer I have to paint a picture, because a lot of things were said here. You know, we had a meeting last night and afterwards people come over, they didn't like to hear the rate increase and so on, but at least they understood. Where we were, why we waited so long. We weren't waiting so long, we've been doing changes and bought our. Lines throughout and and so on, we've had problems. Vermont, I know a lot of friends on your street, they call me too. I've got guys that work with me, when I worked at the bank, they call them and say, hey, I got this. I said, I know, and heck, we fixed it, next thing you know, it breaks again down the road. That's why that line needs replaced and it's going to be replaced. And hopefully, as we go forward. Who in the world knows that we don't have a leak somewhere? That's, that's in a perfect world. That's my sermon and thing as. The position I think I've stated that we've done. Can you add to that, Mr. Manager?
Uh, I, I would like our CPA, we have Todd Dinges on the line there, uh, to kind of. Where this two dollar and seventy cent came from, why do we have a base rate? And I, I, I think he can add some color to that.
It would be interesting to, you know, the version you're here today, tell us your feelings. We have the equal responsibility to explain to you why. Probably need the rate. And then people talk about base rate and so on, so we have our accountant who designs the rates, he's well-respected due to state. But what's uh, Smith Cochran Hicks is the term. And he was with us last night. Uh, Todd, you on there?
Yeah.
Hello?
Hello.
I want to explaining this uh, rate structure and what's going on.
Uh, yeah, thank you for the opportunity. Basically, what we do in preparing rates is we do an analytical study. Of the last several years of the operations of the utility. Work with the management and the board.
What's the.
What we think would be a budget that uh, that we need to operate from. And basically, what we do is consider what we have to pay, which would be. The operating cost that we anticipate. The debt service, which are the principal and interest payments on any outstanding loans or bonds that we have. And then also fund our required reserve accounts, which we are required by law. Maintain for uh, reserves for bond uh, issues. And also renewal and replacement of, of the equipment. So after we determine what our total expenses are, we uh, call that our, our revenue requirements. In other words, we know how much revenues we need. Then we go through a process where we analyze each customer. As far as usage, that, that customers are using each month in water. Along with the classes of customers that we have, whether they be residential, commercial or industrial. And develop a rate. Uh, proposal based on all of those facts. And under this specific scenario. We've determined that we need nine percent of additional revenues. And that will take care of operating our system. Plus funding our required reserve accounts, plus. Uh, paying uh, our, our required debt service. And I have done this for over thirty-five years. I've worked in many, many cities and towns and public service districts in West Virginia. And I can say that this is a very modest rate increase. I'm currently working with several communities that are looking at fifty, sixty, seventy percent rate increases and sometimes even higher than that. So I want to commend the, the, the board, the management. And the uh, workers of the Clarksburg Water Board for maintaining the system in a efficient and effective manner. And I, I'll develop these rates, I feel nine percent is what we need to move forward on. And I would uh, support the action of the board to pass this ordinance.
All right, thank you very much for your information. I hope some people maybe can gather and understand some of it, it gets complex, believe me.
Todd, uh, uh, I, I want to make sure I reiterate this. Sixty-one percent. Sixty-one percent of our residential customers. Are base. Are base rate customers, they use less than a minimum. Sixty-one percent. That's a lot of people. That's a lot of people, so that's sixty-one percent. Todd, if you can grab it from there, why, why is there a base rate?
We need a base rate to uh. Support the capital improvements that, or the capital investment that we have. In other words, you have to pay for your fixed costs, such as your debt service, the principal and interest on your bonds. The basic. Expenses that relate to just maintaining your system, not. In the multiple, uh, uh, in the production of water. We have to establish a base so that we can guarantee revenues. From each customer to support our basic operations. And that's the three thousand gallons is the standard mechanism throughout the state. As far as establishing a base rate based on a certain gallon. We could just charge a rate per thousand for every gallon we sell. And have no base rate, but that rate would be so enormous and like. Like Mr. Cox explained, we need a certain amount of money to operate the facility. If you have customers subsidizing other customers, that goes against what the Public Service Commission allows. So that would be deemed an improper uh, rate-making process.
Scott, thank you for that information. I, I just brought up a point I should have made earlier. I have people knock on my door, bring me their bill and they say, gee, it went up a dollar something. Our bills, when you get them. We bill for the sewage department as well. So when you get your bill, it has Clarksburg Water Board, you read the fine print, it says water twenty-nine, ninety-eight. And you see the forty, fifty, whatever's the sewage, and you see a utility tax the city of Clarksburg charges. But all these people we see on Facebook and all over the place are saying we have the highest water rates because they're looking at that seventy-seven dollars. But they don't see it's only twenty-nine, ninety-eight for the water, we're talking about base customers. So, so anyway, so anyway. That's the billing part of. I like a, a lot of times we hear people, their car's damaged, they threaten us with this and that. We say, where your car was damaged, we're not even doing work there, you know? So because we're so public. Everything is Clarksburg Water Board, when in fact you look behind the scenes a little bit, it's not all Clarksburg water. But uh. People say, well, why didn't, it's like he said. I don't use a lot of water, why not just pay for the gallons I use? The thing is, it costs money for you to be able to get those gallons you use. Everybody shares somewhat in. The delivery of the water, the expenses. Now, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. It's because there's a cost to deliver that water to your house. And, and it's proportionally in that rate, so you pay a base rate, you're paying something toward the operational plant, getting the water to you. Uh, if we had to just pay for the water you use, you could not afford, even the lowest persons. There's not a rate we could design low enough. That the low-end people could pay for it, it would just murder everybody. So that's the thing about the base rate. Uh, anything else on it? Uh, I think, anything else here? Paul, you ready to vote on this, everybody? I appreciate you letting me talk about this a little bit too. And uh, your, your part's done, you can let the laptop are done. Okay, Paul?
Is that legal?
Already ready?
Yes.
It's legal, he got, we don't even know that's him.
It's Paul, believe me. Go ahead.
Believe him.
By the way, where we, uh, I, I, are you also an attorney? Let's go on and talk about this, uh, ready to go?
Yeah. A lot of motion is ready to. Yeah, I made a motion, um, to move forward on the ordinance, um, um, read this up here. An ordinance setting forth the rates, fees, and charges for service to customers of water work systems in the Clarksburg Water Board here in the county in West Virginia.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor that we approve, uh, this ordinance for this rate increase, uh, is it, uh, which was second to it?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion, board members? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. And thank you all, and thank you for coming, you're more than welcome to stay. And I'll say a couple more things I still, a little bit at the end here. If you have questions, there's our general manager. People pick on him coming from a small town or whatever, that's not true, he's the best general manager I've ever had. I've worked under the previous manager, and he was a very good guy too, but this is excellent, our general manager. We have a good team and staff here. Our people are always open to try to answer your questions or help you with your problems, so call. The other thing too is, we, we'd love people to come to our meetings if you have a better understanding. I know it's three o'clock in the afternoon, the county meets in the daytime, but you're always welcome. And the other thing too is, we have a website, it's called Clarksburg Water Project. That's easy to remember, clarksburgwaterproject.com. And you can look on there, and you can look at your, how do you say, by your, uh, account number or you can look at your account number or your address or just account.
You know, account number, address.
Your account number and address, and you can look up and you can see what kind of a service line I have and all that. And you can see where we're working in neighborhoods and any kind of information. It's on there, so it's clarksburgwaterproject.com, okay? I thank you all, I hope we've been helpful to you, I know it's a disappointment, believe me, I have to pay the rate. Okay, now just, wait a minute, okay, ready? We done? All right, thank you, our public hearing comment is over and so on. And we're gonna take a five-minute break and go to our regular meeting.
But this is gonna be, um, Public Service Commission's gotta approve this, right?
No, no, no.
Okay. Say, again, again, again.
Your Public Service Commission doesn't recommend.
I think you misunderstand a lot of stuff, you need to talk to, so I'll, okay. Oh, you got a second? Yes, we're gonna take five-minute break just to some of us. All right, you're gonna leave us?
Yes, I immediately.
Okay, Jeff. The he's, 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 by the way, I would say good this gentleman is, he's on the board of directors of Short Line Public, this Public Service District. Who we're now managing, yes.
You bear that the Public Service Commission, what you should focus about them, favorite, any increases. If you check, I think you're gonna find out now that they're recommended that you increase your rates every year one percent to keep up with inflation, you know? That's first thing.
Exactly, I've heard that.
Second thing. I know everybody in this room probably don't like to have to bill rates, I don't either. But, here, I'm gonna tell you, out of the short line out in the country, I pay forty-five dollars a month if I don't turn a spigot.
See what I'm saying? People complain about twenty-nine, in this county, you just can't believe the rates happen. But we've got five-minute break, all right?
Next thing I'll tell you is there is nothing any more miserable than turning on a spigot if you're not on shitty water. And not having no water coming out of the well.
You have to have water and air to breathe. Okay, let's, let's take our break here. Paul, we're gonna take a five-minute break, we'll get back to you. Okay? Thank you all for coming. Is Paul back with us?
Paul?
Yes, I'm still here.
Thank you, thank you, Paul.
Well, I, I'll tell you.
Paul, this meeting has been shorter if you hadn't talked so much.
Well, you know, I got a lot on my mind.
All right, folks. President, I could just say, and I don't say this to be obsequious, because I'll criticize you, and I have in the past, but that five-minute soliloquy was brilliant. You touched on every key fact in the three-year journey that we've made, um, with regard to this project. And I just wanna compliment you, I thought it was perfect.
Well, you know, we've done some public information meetings.
Grounded, huh?
I have Bobby Tenny back there helping me, Jason, and Doug, and you, and everybody. This guy right here, that guy right there, that guy. Get a lot of help from our other board members, appreciate it.
Take a compliment, Mr. President, nice job.
Well, I thank you, but, uh, I think we had to at least, for the questions they raised, tell the story. You know, about why did we do it earlier, why we're doing it piecemeal and all that. Okay, let's move on, guys.
Mr., Mr. Chairman, if, if I could, just, uh, out of respect of time, uh, we have in the audience Jeff Dixon, Liz and Charles, and I don't like to hit him on the road. Uh, he's one of the last things on the agenda, I'd like to go ahead and, and go ahead and, uh, address that now, if you don't mind.
Okay, Jeff?
Jeff Dixon, yes, he is with Premier Risk Management Solutions. Uh, he's here to present his
This is the safety.
Safety consulting contract proposal. And, uh, with that, Jeff, I'd give you the floor and I'd give you your presentation, your overview of the proposal. Uh, Jeff's been with us, we're going on year three now.
Yeah.
Uh, Jeff is excellent, excellent. I, I, I would rate him as one of the, uh, top safety consultants I have dealt with in my twenty-five years, uh, in, in the business. Uh, and, uh, actually, outside being a, uh, a business partner, he's a good friend of all of us. So, without, turn that floor over to you.
All right, Jeff, you got it?
Thank you, guys, for your time today, uh, just, our contract runs from September first to September first every year. So it was time for that to come up, uh, for this year. Uh, basically, my job for the board every month is I do safety training for the board, but I'm also here to evaluate, look at our project sites. We also have a safety committee that, uh, chair and take care of each month too. My job is to work with all the employees, um, it's friendships, the wrong word, but I do try to develop relationship, relationships with everyone that's here. Um, everybody keeps my number, and I'm, basically, I try to be an employee of the, of the board, uh, and, and work with every employee that's here. And I'm honored to be here, I've worked with several boards throughout the state of West Virginia. Um, I make sure to be here, you know, at least once a month, but as, as I said remotely, I'm available, uh, every day of the month. Um, did ask for a slight increase, uh, this year, just as you guys know, some costs have went up.
You'll get two dollars and seventy cents.
Thank you.
Well, that's, by the way, that's a month.
Very generous. But, again, thank you, guys, for the opportunity to be here, uh, thank you for the opportunity to continue working for you. And also, I'd like to put out there is I, I do accept constructive criticism. There's something that I can do better, that I could better provide, I, I would be glad to be here and glad to do that. Um, my job is to do a good job for you guys, so if I need to do better, and there's something I can do better, I'll follow means of here to listen to that. But thank you all for your time, and thank you for allowing me to be here.
All right, my recommendation is to, uh, accept the proposal. You have the contract there, but
Yep.
In your plan.
Yeah.
Like a rundown toward the end, because, yeah. He rolled, he's pretty much on his way to the end.
Yeah, all that rate stuff took up a lot of space. What is it, uh, what's the expenditure? Do you have how much and all that?
It's twelve thousand dollars, plus travel expenses.
Okay.
It's on page eighty-four.
It'll take forever to get there. Mom, I'm here. All right, uh. Premier?
Yeah. That's it.
Paul, you with us, buddy?
Yes.
Uh, it's a contract, it's twelve thousand. Okay, I'll make a motion that we Premier, I make a motion that we, um,
I'll second.
Accept the, uh, Premier, uh, contract terms for the amount of twelve thousand dollars plus travel expenses. I just found you, I found Jeff's picture on here, so I guess that's the same thing. Okay, motion on the floor to exercise, uh, this contract with, uh, Premier. Uh, there's a motion and duly seconded, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you very much, Jeff, thank you.
Let you get on the road, buddy.
Have a safe trip back. That's one less meal our manager has to pay for. One thing I've always said, you know, we do serious business, we do have some fun, but yeah, okay, let's go back to where I
Jeff is an excellent addition to our work family here and an excellent partner with safety.
Next item we have is approval minutes, we gotta get to that. Was there anybody else speaking or anything, that other was with ordinance? Do we have anybody else have any no communication? All right, let's, uh, let's, uh, move on now for the approval of the minutes. I make the motion that we approved the minutes from the September to September ten. It's been moved to second to approve the minutes of September tenth, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries, move on.
Uh, Jason. Financial, I've got the monthly financial statement for month ending August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and that will be presented. Our very own Jason Farrell, our Director of Finance, Jason, you got the floor, start.
Hey, guys, we are, this is for the, uh, month of August. Um, finished out the year, um, so you're finished up, finished sixteen point six seven percent on the month. And then, we have, uh, oh, sorry. We've increased our debt by one point, almost one point five million, our total bond debt now is currently at eight point three six five. Um, but our debt service factor is two point three eight, so it's still, that's, that's a good number for us at this point with the bond that, with the bond issue that we've done so far. It's a good number, because we, our, our minimum that we can have is one point one five, so we, we're well above that. Um, our current water sales, uh, we are, uh, eighteen percent of our budget, and we're over budget by one point three five percent right now. And our total revenues is, uh, eighteen percent of our budget, which were one point three three percent of the total revenues, uh, over budget there. And we are currently point five three percent under budget on our expenses, which there are at sixteen point four, four, sixteen point fourteen percent of our budget. But our, and then, of course, on the bottom point, I tell you, we've had some, got a couple bad months there, so the percentage of the budget chemicals, the twenty-one four one, twenty-one point four one percent, but I imagine that will come down as well.
Any questions for Jason?
I'm making motion that we, um, accept the financial statements of the month, um, as we did.
Paul?
It's moving to second, any further questions or comments? All right, well, nice job hanging there with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to General Manager Report, Business Matters. Uh, first, we have the Water System Improvements Project Phase Three A, turn that over to Mr. Tenny in the back.
Um, the way line, putting services in Northview, they've got, they're working their way up Sixteenth Street, going the cross streets between Fourteenth and Sixteenth. Uh, they should start, uh, as they get those services tied in, they'll be removing the gravel and putting the asphalt trench repairs in. Uh, they told me that they will start paving sometime in November, so hopefully that gets here sooner rather than later, weather holds off for us, they get paid. Uh, Contract Two is, uh, DOS down in Hartland Staley, they're moving along, they, they come up Hartland Avenue, they finished it, they're going over to South Alexander Charter. Uh, they're gonna drop back and start tying in services, they're also be doing trench repair, they started concrete sidewalk repairs last week. Uh, their plan is that once they get that section done, they're gonna move across Millford Street to Waverly Way and do a couple side streets to get through the winter to kinda stay out of the focus of the main road. Uh, Contract Three, Kramer Drive, um, portion of that project is, they, they lack probably, they probably got two or three weeks. Um, the insertion valve should be getting installed within the next week or two, and we'll be able to finish our tie-ins. Maybe contractor for them's coming next week to start that. Uh, Contract Four is downtown, um, they are finishing up the section between Monticello and Elm. Uh, main line's getting charged tomorrow and tested, then they'll start connect, doing a couple more tie-ins and doing the services, and they'll be off of that section, hopefully within a few weeks, and that whole end of town will be done, and they can start down by Wendy's and start getting that line laid once we get to San Terre Board and Stormline that way.
Which company gets done?
When did you say you're, um, just starting Waverly Way?
Uh, his three-month look ahead had it to be when he finished South Alexander Charter, and what does that go behind that, Mar, goes behind the church.
Musgrave.
Musgrave, yeah. So there's just three streets, small street right there, so they're probably, they thought they would be in that section till at least Thanksgiving, so after so they're looking after Thanksgiving, beginning of December to move across to Waverly, Waverly, Ryan, John's. Just those small streets on the side, something to keep them working through the winter and still making progress, but not in a big area.
You know, with lower, lower Waverly, the, uh, lines and street, but, but, uh, next part, we're level softs in the alley.
Mm-hmm. And we do have a section up there that goes behind some houses.
Yeah, that's where
Yeah, they, they, yeah, we, they've got a proposal that they've got a board through those backyards instead of digging.
Okay.
So.
All right, good job.
Yep. All right, so that's Three A, Three B, we're gonna move on to Doug's map.
Yeah, Three B just continuing to do the mapping as we have been. Uh, over the next few weeks, we'll sit down and start trying to determine what we think the number of contracts will be as we look at this, what makes sense, whether it is, you know, three, four, or five contracts, whatever. Don't know yet, can we sit down and start looking at it once we get all the things put together?
Anticipation when we might receive the first wave of, of drawings?
I think it's gonna be sometime
First year, probably.
Yeah, probably, probably, it's hard to tell in November through December, because we've got guys taking vacations.
That works good for us, like a lot of stuff, catch up, so that, that'd be a good winter project.
If I had to say, it's gonna be January, we'll, we'll get together.
We're good with that on the phone.
Uh, can I add, are we done with this, or Three B?
Any questions on Three B?
No, let's do some, let's do something else here. Uh, Scott, he's on here for, uh, Secretary Right.
Yeah, Scott's on here for the TTHM.
Yeah, okay, let's jump to him, so he had to step for all this stuff, we can move the agenda around.
Yes.
Let's just move to item under the TTHM removal, and, uh, do Scott a favor, okay?
Scott likes us into our meetings, I thought.
Oh, hey, I, I feel your pain after today. Man.
How come you didn't, how come you didn't speak under public hearing?
Well, I'm gonna tell you something, I was real close to speaking up, because I was gonna take up from my man Jason in there.
Okay, uh, where do we stand?
All right, okay, we're moving to TTHM, and, uh, project update. Uh, Scott, you wanna go ahead and let them know, and then I'll let uh, Mr. Stranko follow up with that.
Yeah, I think we've gotten everything, uh, overnighted to you guys for signature of the contract.
I got it at two thirty, so you were lucky.
Okay, and then, as soon as we get signature to that, uh, Jason, we're gonna need that scanned.
I'll scan it, send it to you tonight.
And send it to us tonight, so we get it to the bond company tonight.
Yep.
And then hopefully, we turn this thing around, so we can start ordering, hopefully, next week. That's what we're shooting for. So be prepared for us to, to, we just need signature, you know, on your part, and then we'll get going on our part tonight.
Thanks, I've got the money.
Money's there already, yeah, we're already just to draw it down, yeah. So, you, you reviewed all the documents, can you, uh, in here, do you have a memo? Uh, you wanna just kinda give up, uh, overview?
Sure, uh, you have a memo dated September twenty-third, which is the day after I got the full contract, uh, from the firm. The deliverables and scope of services, I defer to Jason, I don't review that. Operational issues are, uh, obviously, and Jason's fairly, with regard to the form of the contract and with regard to the insurance and the bonding, everything looks to be in order. I did wanna ask, uh, Scott, a couple questions, if I could.
Sure.
Uh, I'm concerned about workers' compensation, uh, and I thought your, your, uh, principal, Mr. Wigan, said something about, uh, you have no employees, is that, is that, will you have employees deployed here in West Virginia to work on this project, and will they be here for more than thirty days? We will have, uh, they're not, they're contracted employees, they're not direct employees. In, in other words, we, they're, uh, uh, you know, we pay them on a contractual basis, they're not employed by us. That's what I The risk, the risk that I'm seeking to manage is that one of these employees gets injured in the project. Of course, the project, of course, the Water Board would be, uh, uh, subject to defending a claim, uh, for personal injury. Now, uh, the way we get around this, of course, is that, uh, Wiggins is indemnifying us for any third-party claims or claims related to the project, so it's, it's good. It's not perfect, but it's good. Uh, um, I would prefer a worker, nice tight workers, comp arrangement, but Uh, um, I would prefer our worker, nice tight workers comp arrangement, but the way they structured their staffing it appears that, uh, that's gonna be a problem to pull off. Uh, uh, you know, uh, Scott, do you, uh, uh, these, uh, contract employees, are they employed by another firm, or how, how do you get these people?
Uh, well, Billy has his own, uh, bus, contracting business to, like, build a, uh, you know, a subdivision or a restaurant, and like the welders that work for him, uh, some of the contractors that work for him, uh, you know, who are just, you know, where we pay them as a contractor, they're gonna be on our team to, to help us, uh, do the install for West Virginia, for you guys. So, uh, we, we have like a list of four or five of them, they're gonna be there, they're gonna be helping us doing the actual install.
Our law, as, as the board will note in the memo I prepared, all our, our law requires that out of state employees here for more than thirty days be covered by some workers' comp insurance, either West Virginia or, uh, Georgia, or, or another state, and there's, there's provisions on how we can make that happen, but.
What's the unless a, unless a written agreement is made, providing otherwise, what's that?
The employee, the employee and the employer will agree that they'll be covered by another state's workers.
Oh, okay, it's a disclosure.
Yes, sir, okay, I'm, I'm suggesting it would be Georgia, but, uh, with regard to executing the contract in the timeframe that we're under here, um, the, the indemnity provisions will protect us, but I, Scott, if we could continue to work on this workers' comp issue, maybe fine tune it a little bit to make sure that we've got, and your employees, contract or not, have all the protections they need to make sure that they, they're made whole if they're injured. So.
Good point, man.
Other than, so, so I'm asking Scott, can you guys agree to continue to work on this workers' comp issue with me?
Oh, absolutely, I think Billy has that ta- taken care of. I just can't, I, I, I just don't wanna speak out of turn here to say that he has, but he, I know he has mentioned that he has, he has taken care of that aspect for this, so whatever you need for him to get back to you on, yes, just, uh, you know, we, we can get it back to you. You need it today?
No, I think, again, because there's already indemnity in the contract, uh, um, we could go ahead and sign the contract today.
Now it just have to be done before they actually come and install it on our property.
If we, when that boots on the ground, we need to tie this workers' comp.
Yeah, that's gotta be done.
So, okay, Scott?
Yes, sir, we'll do that.
I look forward to hearing from Billy and, uh, uh, on those details, and then I'll share them with Jason.
Jason, if you could, if, if you could scan that, email it to us. You've got, you've got the bond company's, uh, email address?
That, I, I did not see that in, in here, can you shoot me a text message or email that to me?
Tim, do you have it?
I do not.
I do not have that, yeah, I do not have that.
I will email you as soon as possible on that information.
Yeah, I will, I will include him in the email that I'll send this back to you. Um, and also, uh, Mr. Stranko, I will also include him in there, so he'll have it as well.
There, there's another nuance, Mr. President, just, just to call to your attention, I mean, the resident project representative is designated as Wiggins. You know, called that to Jason's attention, he's not troubled by that, we're, we're, we're.
He's gonna be there with him every, every.
They've gotta work with Bob Davis, that's bad enough, so.
Bob Davis will be our, be our rep, that's gonna work right alongside of.
So Bob is the owner's representative of this project?
Yeah.
Um, without, I recommend that the, uh, board approve the contract.
Okay. Uh, I'm making motion that we, uh, approve the, um, TTHM removal contract they presented.
Okay, so motion on the floor. There's a second, a second, but Paul, any further discussion on this guy, it's got, a lot of discussion just occurred. I think we're ready to vote on paper, say aye.
Aye.
I'll also need a motion for twenty percent upfront cost that's gonna come, because that's gonna come before our next meeting. Is Jason, myself, the authority to go ahead and cut that check and get this thing rolling, so leave that upfront cost, twenty percent, correct?
Yes.
It'll be twenty percent of, uh, of, wh- what was the first site, uh, starts with an A, Anderson?
No, that'd be, uh, I thought we was going to Despard first.
Uh, Despard second, what's the?
Adamston?
Adamston, yeah. It, I might have, I might have them backwards, but, yeah, we're gonna need twenty percent.
The project, wherever they start, so, yeah, it's twenty percent.
I think it's twenty percent of the project, or the, regardless of where your stars are, it's the.
Here, here's, wait a second, here's, here's, here's the schedule. Despard or Adamston, one or the other, which one comes first?
I think Billy said we was gonna start at Despard.
All right, so we start at Despard, we'll need twenty percent for that, okay? All right, and then, two weeks later, we're going to put in for forty percent. Okay, for Despard. And then, after that two weeks, we'll order for another twenty percent for Adamston.
And we'll have another meeting there.
So in other words, we're paying twenty upfront, then we play another forty two weeks after that, but then the next will be on the next tank project, right? Twenty, and then we go forty again, is that the procedure?
We'll do, yeah, well, we'll do twenty, that'll, that'll get us to the next meeting.
But, we don't, we don't have a number, I, I don't recommend this, Mr. President, I mean, I, I think that Wiggins needs to wait until the board convenes again, and invoice us, so you can see an actual number that you can.
Okay, let's do that that way, can we do that, Scott, you're gonna get your money. Do you have the number?
Yeah, I've got the number, uh, Billy's got the number, I, I can get that, we can get that to you, but, you know, what we're thinking about.
Scott, excuse me, Scott, we need an invoice for the record, I mean, we can't just, we can't just ask the.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, Tim, we're gonna invoice probably here over the next day or so, once, we just wanna get the bond done first.
Right, yeah.
And then we will definitely send you, we will send everything in writing of what we need for.
Emergency, is there?
Yeah, the, the, the conundrum is, the board doesn't convene again until two weeks from now, so you can send it tomorrow, but we're not gonna act on it for two weeks.
Can we just do the forty percent in two weeks?
We can do the twenty percent now.
But we don't know the invoice.
We have an invoice or a number.
All right, if we got an invoice tonight, can we get you the, can y'all wait to get us to twenty percent next week? You know what I'm saying?
I love the first phase that here.
Can we do it, uh, can we do it by email?
You can give, I guess, suppose the general manager a thought.
And, and then, and then, and then ratify it at the next meeting. Let's do it that way, I, I suggest that once, once we get the invoice, our general manager will email us a copy of it, and then each board member, without having a meeting or anything, on their own judgment, and if he answers his email, say, I approve, I approve, I approve, without us even having a meeting. And then, because we can't meet, we'd have to call a meeting as a group, so then after that, the next meeting, all we'll do is ratify the action taken. Is that okay, Mr. Man?
It's not perfect, but it satisfies the.
Close enough?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we, so we can do that.
Yeah, so just to let you all know, so you sign the contract today, but you all prove.
Yeah.
And nothing, no money changes hand until they get a original bond in hand. So once you get that original bond in hand, the original with the raised seal, because after the court of, at the courthouse, then they can send the twenty percent invoice in, and that's what I'll let you all see, and we'll go ahead and cut the check and override it down to him, so we can get the ball rolling on this, so it's probably gonna be next week before any of that stuff happens.
All right, just for the record, uh, Paul, are you okay with this, we'll reach a consensus that this procedure?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, so we, our, our board has agreed to this procedure, we want the minutes to show as a consensus, and then, uh, once the bond secured and so on, the next step would be, we'll have a copy of the invoice, there'll be an email go to each board member looking at the invoice, and they'll use their own judgment, pass that back to the manager, whether they approve or not, and then we'll, we will ratify whatever action at the next board. Okay, all right, thank you, you've got it.
You've got the form of motion, right? Yeah.
No, I don't think so, it's an instruction.
In the minutes will show that it's a consensus of opinion, we had a discussion.
It's an instruction.
It's a direction, it's a direction, we're not spending anything, so we don't vote on it.
Got that, Gina? Okay.
So Jason, ju- just to be clear, you need the invoice when, tonight?
I can't pay an invoice until I have the original bond, the paper bond with the raised seal in hand.
Okay, so.
I mean, you can go ahead and send the invoice, but I can't pay it till I have the bond.
I know, I know, exactly, okay.
Yeah, I mean, you, you can, you can send it tonight, but I can't pay it till the bonds.
No, that's fine, but I, as long as we get the signed contract tonight, we're golden. Okay?
Yep, that'll be fine.
Just, what last question for Scott, Mr. President?
Can I ask you something? Who's our, my son, keep your butt, shouldn't we go ahead and, uh, vote to, we voted on the contract, though? Yes, we need to do that today.
Approve the contract, yes, sir.
We have to do that, approve the contract.
Yes, sir.
No monies, but to approve the contract, and then we have these other conditions.
Have they voted on the contract? Have they voted on it?
I thought we voted.
I thought we voted on it.
I thought they did.
I thought we voted on just.
If you made the.
I made the motion.
We proved the, you know, business arrangement, we approved the deal.
Contract's been approved, I'll say.
Okay, well, it's been approved, I wanna make sure.
Yeah.
Because we were talking about, we're talking contract and so on, how to get started on the insurance.
So contract, and I said about the payment, I just wanna make sure.
Just one last.
Go ahead.
Scott, I just wanna make sure we don't lose the fact that Jason also needs the insurance certificates from your carriers as well.
Yeah, that's in here.
That's in.
Yeah, but I, yeah, I need to be, yeah, we need to be added as an additional insured.
Get that, Scott?
Yeah, I'm, I'm making notes here, so you need, you need additional what?
On your, on your insurance, you have to add the Clarksburg Water Board as what they call an additional insured.
Under their policy. On your policy, we need to be added as being insured.
And then what they'll do is they'll, they'll email me, have them to email me that, that page, it's just the one page, uh, and we keep it with your contract.
Okay.
It's pretty much standard stuff.
Yeah, that's pretty standard.
Paperwork.
And then we need, uh, when do you get the, uh, workman's comp situated?
Yeah, is there, is there one that, is there a standard form that we can provide them, that basically they, they sign off, indemnify us?
I'm happy to prepare one, I don't have a standard form, but, I'll, I'll talk to, uh, Mr. Wiggins, we'll see.
You, you can talk to Mr. Wiggins directly on this, okay, so you understand that, Scott?
Understand that, Scott.
What's that?
Your attorney, our attorney, Mr. Stranko, and, uh, Mr. Wiggins, wanting to have some communication as to how to implement that workman's compensation, get the forms or whatever, okay?
Okay, yes, sir.
Hey, or anything else, guys?
That's all.
Let's, let's move on again, I wanna, I wanna back up to something else.
One more thing, an update from, from Todd White here, he is, uh, working on, remember, this is two point nine, is what we're using, we got three point eight from that project, so Todd, Todd's been working on this, so short line tanks.
Well, I wanted to ask you something, before we jump too far ahead, we were talking Three A, don't we have a bill to pay under that project, because under the, under the description of Three A, it says consider all actionable items including when limited to cost estimates, budget rest of contract bids closed, and pay requisition.
Yeah, but.
Don't we have a pay requisition?
We do, but we jumped to TTHM project, that's what, that's what he, he's gonna talk to you about.
We're just gonna stay on TTHM, okay?
Yeah, he's, he's also working on the TTHM.
We've been working with Scott and Billy on the tanks, they've sent Jason the updated quote that we needed to match the remainder of the funds for your grant. Well, they sent it directly to Jason, so Jason forwarded that to me. Tomorrow when I get in, I'm gonna update everything that Shelby was working on with the new information, we're gonna call Kelly O'Neil, get, make sure we're sending everything right, and I will have everything sent to them by Friday.
She'll have all of that free dollars.
The remainder of that money, which is a little over a million dollars.
Shelby's still doing it.
Shelby's done it.
She did it before she left.
Yeah, that was the last document that she did, and turned it over to him, he just got a feeling of the legs.
So I'll get all that done by the end of the week.
Good deal, Scott, thank you.
So he's gonna send it to Kelly.
We've been jumping around here, it's kinda hard for me to keep track of it.
We don't want Doge to sweep that money, so he's running against the timeline for these.
Gotcha, okay.
So he, thank you, Todd.
Thank you very much.
Hey, was that, was that, was that Todd from, uh, the state?
That's Todd from Region Six, Land Development Council.
Yeah, I, I just wanted, yeah, that was one thing that I wanted to let you know, Jason, that Billy had sent you that information, and uh, for Todd, and then of course for you to get it to Todd, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So Todd's got everything he needs from us?
Yes, yes, I do, yep.
Okay, very good, all right, you got it, buddy, thank y'all.
Hey Scott, before you go, tell Billy I need that information for the electric, so I can get it to the power company, start working on Despard.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna kill him, so anyway. I appreciate you guys, we'll get on that. Jason, get us the contract to us, and we'll get on this, buddy.
I'm gonna be working late tonight, I'll get her to you.
Thank you.
You need to work on fine tuning this stuff. I'm gonna fire you before you get started.
Hey, hey, I, I, believe me, it's a challenge, I promise you.
All right, let's, let's move on, just go back to Three A, thanks Scott, pay requisition.
All right, yes, so we are gonna go down to consider all actionable items, including, but not limited to the cost estimates, contracts, bids, quotes, invoices, pay requisitions, resolutions, and change orders. We do have a change order, change order number one, let's prepare, it will be presented by Stephen Haynes from the Thrasher Group. So Mr. Haynes, you got the floor?
Okay, thank you. So the thing, everybody's gotten an electronic copy, is that correct?
Yep.
Yep, we did.
So, uh, this is change order one for contract number three, I was hoping to get change orders for all three contracts, so we've just got a bunch of miscellaneous stuff that, that we've taken care of throughout the project. But the, uh, the big thing here in this change order is to get the insertion valve approved for the twenty four inch line up on, I guess it's Van Buren and Hayes Street.
That's what we call Van Buren, close enough to Van Buren.
So, uh, our decision is that line, the twenty four inch line cannot be shut off in there, or we cannot make the tie in down at, uh, down the bottom of the hill at Chester Street, and the one up by, I think it goes over to Ninth Street. So, uh, so they've requested to, to get a price for that insertion valve.
Wow.
This change order.
I can tell they're not, they're expensive.
This is, uh, for D and M Contracting, this change order is, uh, an increase of one hundred two thousand four hundred thirty five dollars and twenty nine cents.
Twenty nine cents.
However, not all of that cost is associated with the valve insertion.
Biggest part of it, but not all of it.
The big, yeah, the, the greatest part of it, there is also, uh, we finished up the Armory Road portion of the project, so what we did, we kinda went through, we kinda swapped those quantities that we were complete with, and so there were some overruns on some gravel, uh, I think we had a couple, couple extra valves, whatnot. Um, so it does include basically an adjustment for the Armory Road project. However, when I, when I think we're complete with the project, uh, I'm hoping the final adjusted change order is actually gonna reduce the contract amount by a little bit when we get all, everything finished up on, up on this section. But, uh.
Well, how much, how much is it on this twenty four inch line drop, and how much of that hundred and two, is that all? Because part is that, that other stuff is included in that hundred and two, right? The Army Road?
So, the the valve insertion itself is a hundred and twenty four thousand.
Eighty four thousand, is that what that is?
Three fifty one thirty one.
That's, that's for the, the valve part.
That is for the valve insertion.
But that's with a markup, right?
Yes. And so that's kind of a specialty item, core main is the sub that will do now.
And the balances was with, with the, to the Minnigan Gulf Army Road.
Now, what I wanna, what I do want, and I'm, I'm glad you seen that, we were going to buy this and get reimbursed, however, because of the value, we'd have to bid it out, so we were, we were stuck with the contractor happened to deal directly with the vendor, and yes, they did mark it up. We were trying to save that markup, but because of the value of it, we would have to bid it out, and it was just.
What's the markup, how much is the markup?
Eleven thousand dollars.
Jesus, pardon me, I shouldn't say that.
Wow, that, that's, yeah. I mean, how long would it delay it? Sixty days. And then you're gonna get liquidated damages.
And you're not gonna be able to pay.
Yeah, and you won't be able to pay this. Yeah, I, I believe me, I've already, whenever this with them, it's, we're stuck, I didn't wanna pay it either. Uh, yeah, I don't. I, I didn't wanna pay it either, but that's I don't like it either.
It's, well, I'm not gonna comment what I feel about it, we just don't have any choices, I mean, you know.
Yeah, I mean, there's.
Between a rock and a hard place, and this could continue happening all time. Well, wait, we've heard the problem, Paul, you have any questions on this? Hello? Paul, I'm fairly here, what he said or not?
Yes.
It was a hundred and two, I forget what the amount was, this is for the valve and for the cost overruns out the Armory Road, it's gonna come to a hundred and, was it a hundred and two?
Hundred two thousand four thirty five.
Any questions, Paul, from you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't.
Well, we're kind of, our hands are tied behind our back.
Well, yes, yeah.
I want a motion to, uh.
I'm not making a motion. I'm, I'm, I'm. Sick of this kind of stuff.
I know. We all are, but I don't have an alternative. Paul, what'd you say?
Was there a motion made?
No.
Are we, uh, I mean, are we agreeing? We need to do this, right?
Mr. Manager, our engineering firm, we're kind of like, our hands are tied.
Yeah, we can't do the tie-ins unless we do the insertion valve.
We have to, you have to do the insertion valve. We've got twenty-four inch lines.
We can't shut the water off.
And they can't shut.
We can't talk with, uh, we can't talk with Core Main.
It's not Core Main, it's D and M. That's the markup.
We can't talk with D and, D and M?
D and M, that's the contractor.
That's the contractor.
Well, I'll make a motion to.
Yeah, that, that markup is. Core and Main is charging them. They got to run it through their books and they're, they're up at, uh, eighteen percent, which I, or fifteen percent, which.
That's, that's a standard amount for any contractor that you get work on, uh, markup of fifteen percent. It includes the increase in their bonding that they have to do because they have to cover if there's any issues.
Well, there are expenses they have.
Yes, they have to unload that. They have to, to do not, Core Main comes in and does the actual work, uh, to put the valve in and do the, do the insertion. But there is still work associated with the, uh, contractors, E and M, to dig it out, prepare it, get it ready.
Preparation.
Yeah, uh, so again, there's, there's a significant amount of that fifteen percent that is fixed cost that, that shows up there. And there is a little bit of profit in there.
Sure. What about, let me ask you this. What about the liquidated damage thing? Explain that to me.
The delays, what is it, a thousand dollars a day?
I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but.
What's step four? Is that because they can't be working? They charge you something or what is it?
Well, it's not liquidated damage. It's, it's.
Somebody said liquidated.
Yes, but, but liquidated damage is what we charge the contractor on your behalf for not meeting a deadline.
Oh, yeah.
What it is, is they could charge you, on the other hand, for delayed charges.
They were, they were delayed on their finishing that project up there because they couldn't get the water. If they could have got the water off, we'd be done. They couldn't get the water off, doing the insertion valve takes a few weeks to get that scheduled.
We remember the nightmare project that we had. Jason, was the, uh, project that we litigated?
MPCO.
MPCO.
Oh, yes.
Same, it's the same dynamic.
Same thing. I call liquidated damages. It's all the same.
Why didn't we discover the fact that we weren't going to be, weren't going to be able to shut the water off? Why didn't we know that?
Because sometime when you go through these scenarios, we look at them and we design them of how you're putting the line in. And we will look at most circumstances of how it's being constructed. But we're not always privy to what the contractor plans to do and the order that he does this work in. And so, sometimes it does require a fact of something we may not even be aware of, of, okay, you can't shut this valve off because the plant's still running. Or because if you shut a certain valve off, you're going to turn off the entire town. There's parts of that that we will know because we know your system, but there's some of it we won't know until we get to the point and Bob or, or Dave or Bob or Bobby runs out there and goes, oh, whoa, 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 wait a minute.
We can't, we.
That valve doesn't, that valve will shut off.
That valve will shut off. Bobby thought it. Huh.
But it is.
Yes.
We tried to shut it off before we went to this.
All right.
I mean, as much money as we've been doing this project, is there a way we can split the cost on this?
I don't think there is any way. Do you?
This is a contractual obligation.
Yeah.
I hate it just as much as you do, but believe me, didn't I? They, they know.
Listen, we voted, we voted on a lot of things I didn't like, you know?
I talked to Core and Main, told them to invoice us until I found out what the value was.
Well, that's what.
It's over fifty thousand dollars. We have to bid it out.
It'll take two months.
Ever, ever bid on it. Yeah.
And then, of course, the contract.
Now, you want to be pushing outside of their, their contract.
Too much to bid it. And then how much more time do you actually get the material in?
Yeah, right. Now they have it right now, but maybe not two months.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to vote for it, but I'm not happy about it.
I'm not either.
No, we, Chad, I, I told you, you heard my discussion. I don't like it either, but the problem is we get backed up into a corner and, uh, we can't jeopardize our, our system or our, or the project. It's unfortunate. Things do happen. That's why we have change orders now and then. We tried to minimize that. I didn't like the thing in the old days, you do a project and the guy knows full well, he's going to ask for a bunch of change orders. No, that's my, my concern. And, and, uh, this case, apparently we had no way of knowing. If there was a possibility that we made an error and we didn't know and so on, or we, whatever, I'd be really upset. But the thing is, you've explained it.
Yeah, you explained it well. Thank you, Doug.
Well, and, and so let me go ahead and I really feel, and you talked last night about telling the stuff that you don't want to hear, that you need to hear.
Yeah.
And so, one of those things are, remember, the fact of the way we got the money for this project and also the fact of, of how we had to get this closed in such a time. This was an extremely expedite, a, a project this size takes two, three, four years to, to go plan. We did it in a year, plus or minus a little over. And so, we are going to run into those circumstances out in the field where we go, okay, guys, we missed that. A group, us, you guys, whoever, and this is not the last one we're going to hit, guys. And so, I want to make sure we have that expectation that there are things going to come up. They're going to be uncomfortable. We're going to come in and tell you, here's the cost, here's what we're missing. But it is just part of, of this construction and being able to utilize the, the great money.
This is a very complex, uh, procedure what we're doing. So many different streets and size of lines and location and this obstacle, that obstacle, other utilities. I mean, this has not been an easy thing to do.
Jason, if you, I mean, I'm sure you'll do that, Doug, because I mean, I trust you so much and, um, but if you see this as soon as you can, maybe we would have enough time to maybe do a bid out, you know? Wait, wait, see something before.
Sure. All right, let's, uh, let's, Paul, anything else you want to say, Paul?
Remember on the Chestnut Street, we did do this.
Yes.
We bid it out.
Yeah, I do remember.
You were here, Dave. At the end up, you came.
At the end.
We did save. So, we saved a bunch of money on that one. You get, you, you win some, you lose some. Unfortunately, this time we lost a little bit. I hate it.
Yeah.
I do.
Paul, you made a motion. I'll second the motion. Uh, let's, uh, move on to a vote. I think we've talked enough on it. All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Okay.
Reluctant.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Let's move on to the next item.
I hate it. I'm sorry. It is what it is.
Getting close to dinner time, let's.
All right, Todd, you're up. Tom's, he is on three Bs. Now, let's get, not get confused. He's going to present you all with a three B. Paint, uh, requisition number one. This is on three B, not three A.
Yeah, it's for, uh, contractor for design work on three B. Um, comes to a total of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Um, my understanding is, Jason, and you guys voted to allocate a million dollars to be reimbursed, uh, once the project is awarded. I just did your requisition expenditure like we have with three A, just so I'm going to track it for you, so we know what we're going to reimburse when that time comes. Yes, what that's for.
So, I think it was April twenty-third of this year, you all obligated one million dollars from our cash working capital. Right?
It's part of our budget process. This, this, see, it's going to happen. It's just that, it is happening.
And that money will be.
Is that a good way to vote?
Cash working capital depreciation fund.
Uh, that's one of them. I can't remember.
I think it's depreciation.
Yeah, I do remember.
I think it's depreciation fund. Um, that money will be reimbursed back to us up to the million dollars at closing on the three B bonds.
We have reimbursement resolution.
We do, yes, because you had Mr. Amen in here. We got all that.
All right, I'm trying to find this. Boy, I tell you, this thing is.
Where, where are we at?
Get us right after what you just looked at.
Really?
Yeah, L B water, keep going.
Pleasure.
Almost there. Keep going.
All right, well, let's, uh, you've got the amounts somewhere. So, if you can keep moving. Okay.
Jason.
Want, you want to repeat that amount to us back there?
It's a million dollar.
One hundred and eighty-nine thousand.
Eighty-nine, two twenty-five.
What was it?
That's how much we obligated.
Oh.
Top to that amount. You're only spending one eighty-nine, two twenty-five.
Like, it's like a draw.
Yeah. Two twenty-nine, just one thousand.
Yeah, just that.
I think we should be approved. The, uh, requisition was number one for amount of, um, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
You got it.
I'll make a motion.
This motion is doing, we seconded. We've had discussion what happened in advance on this discussion. Ready to vote off? Favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Right? He'll email that to Jason and me.
I was going to make a copy real quick.
There you are.
But no volume.
It's still emailed, yeah.
Okay, how do we sign one? Do I have to sign more than?
No, it's just one page today. You got it easy today, Al.
You can go ahead. Bye, bye. It's five o'clock.
Thank you, buddy.
Thank you, Todd.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the next item there.
We're snake hole.
Yeah, Snake Hollow Road. Like, is there any updates from last time?
I am not.
Okay, let's see.
Um. I wonder if the contractor, I do have a.
Oops.
A percentage of change order at the next meeting for that small one.
Small one? What's small in your interpretation?
So, um, seven thousand. Actually, uh, I think our last change order was a fifty, yeah. So, we, we tried to close out the permanent, the D E P came up, did inspection and they wanted us to add about a hundred feet of rip wrap in ditch one. So, uh, we've talked to the contractor. We've got a bid item for that. So, that's going to be a bid item. But since they have left the project, there's about a thirty-five dollar utilization fee.
It's great to come back in.
This is what they have left. So, um, uh, yeah, I get that change order.
Can we do it? The work?
I'm sorry?
Can we do it?
Uh, it's all grant, it's all grant dollars. So, if you did it yourself, it, it probably wouldn't be eligible for reimbursement. It could possibly cost you.
Is this a reimbursement? Going to the next, holding it up to the next board meeting or you wanted to go ahead? It's pretty straightforward. It's a change order number two for the amount of seven thousand dollars.
I don't have that. I wish I brought that with me. I don't have that number.
I don't see that stuff here. Is that's?
No, he doesn't have it. I'm just, is two weeks going to hurt him?
We can't vote on it.
Okay.
No, I think they're going to come and do it.
Okay, so two, so two weeks in will hurt.
Okay, well, we got to do it. So, you don't have any choice. I mean, the, the agency says.
He just doesn't have enough.
They come in.
Maybe more than seven now, maybe seven thousand.
We'll take care of that. We'll take care of the next meeting. You have, you have documents.
The whole, yeah.
Okay, let's go on.
So, then, a prep date there. Second Street Pump Station.
Still waiting on stuff. Only here in November. We're ready to move on now.
Good report, good report.
Bob's got just a quick one.
Uh, yeah, I met with three oh four fence. They removed the fence where we needed, so Scott can get started on the way.
I like that.
All right, very good. Okay.
TTHM we took care of.
Yep.
Operation and maintenance agreement between Clarksburg Water Board and Short Line PSD. There is a meeting tomorrow at noon at Thrasher's office on the second floor conference room.
Yeah.
I will not be able to be there because I'm on vacation tomorrow and Friday.
Oh, I'll be there.
Bobby Pazini and Jason Cunningham, which is the worker that we just hired this week, that's from Short Line, is going to be in attendance. Any of you?
Yeah, I generally spend going.
Folks could go.
I've, I've tried to go and Jason couldn't make it.
Mr. Circle would love you to be there. There's changes. We met with Mr. Circle yesterday. Uh, went over the project, got a better feel for it. Uh, we've got a lot of questions that we're going to present tomorrow that Mr. Circle's going to be there. He took notes, so, but we are going to have references. If you could be there. Al, that would be great. That is tomorrow at noon.
I'm looking right now.
Is Kyle Dave able to go?
But, no. We got him, Jason, Cunningham.
Dave Burns.
Dave Burns is going to go too. Okay.
Uh, I, I, I have it on the calendar now.
Okay. We got to get this, and I'll tell you, uh, what Mr. Circle, and I, I support him wholeheartedly, he is trying to. Get the work that, it's emergent, it needs to be done. That's the sixteen hydrants that's been identified that needs to be replaced. There's a handful of valves. I know they've already ordered all these hydrants. I think there's thirty-five. And I think there's several valves beyond the ones that have been identified to be replaced. Um, and I think there's twelve hundred feet of, of water line. They're wanting them to get in there, get that done. He's wanting to save money on this project so we can get Thrasher to get that extension done to Lumberport. And that's exactly what we want. And that's what Mr. Circles want to, want to get done, is to see what needs to be done. All the meters is, I think, been changed out right now. I think they're all finished in the G I S, the G P S, I think, coordinates on all of them. Outside of getting that twenty, twelve hundred feet of line and getting some of these valves and hydrants done, get Green River's contract finished out, see how much money we have. Of course, we got that pump station also. There's a pump station on Howard that needs to be put in. Get that stuff done, see how much money we have. Let's get Thrasher, let's get that line to Lumberport. That's what we want.
What, what, how many feet we talking about line out?
I have no idea.
That's what, that's what we have to get Thrasher to see, uh, what we're coming off Jones' run, is that we're coming off of.
Uh, just pretty good run, wasn't it?
That's just for the twelve hundred. I mean, get the line to Lumberport.
The extension, the extension from Short Line into Lumberport, we got to have.
I don't think it comes off Jones. Somewhere there.
Well, they were talking, Jones, and you got Cambria.
Yeah, it's one of those two.
It's deadhead right there.
At the.
At the cemetery. Right up near cemetery.
There's two options.
About a half mile out of.
Are you going to be there tomorrow, Bob?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, Bob will take care of it.
Yeah, so that's what we're trying to get done. We're trying to get that project done. One, we got to ramp it up and transfer assets over. And then we can get Thrasher to start on that. Because I'm telling you, guys, if their plant lasts till next year, we're going to be lucky. We've got to help this hook several Lumberport. So, do we have to do any upgrades within short line system? We don't know. Maybe, maybe not. That's what Thrasher's going to figure out for us.
We'll spend all this and they say. They don't have any choices. That's what I worry about.
Uh, we have no agreement with Lumberport.
I mean, if, if.
The way, that's what I'm saying.
I don't think that's going to be a problem.
Yeah, I know you don't think. I understand. I mean, that's a given, no?
Yeah, I, I, I've talked with the mayor.
Okay, you've talked to the mayor. I was with you down there one meeting too. But you know, I'm always hesitant to go doing a bunch of things and all of a sudden out of the blue here comes some other person. They say, well, some other service. We don't think it can happen.
And that, and that.
We don't think it can happen.
Good suggestion. I'll work with our general counsel. We'll get, uh, just a real quick two pager of, you know, that we're going to do this work and.
With the understanding, some understanding.
They're going to hook into us.
With the objective that we don't, we'll manage the risk here. We're not going to lose money on that.
Right, right. Because we're just talking about. All we're doing.
Looking forward to working with you.
But in this case, we're talking about providing them water.
We just want some assurance.
Water that we're not going to run their plants or anything like that.
Yeah.
We're just, they're going to be our customer of ours.
And the county commission has been involved in this, and I have asked them for money.
I'm glad you told us what's going on. Okay.
And I've asked them for money and Thrasher needs to tell us what we're looking at over there and, and I, I, I'm looking forward to this project.
Well, they're, they need, they need also Lumberport. They, I, I run to Lumberport all the time and they're all kind of hoping that we can get this thing rolling once I've talked to them.
Yeah, I know Ron Holcomb from Thrasher's office working closely with Lexi and the folks over there.
That's.
They, they've had some issues there. I think they've got it worked out. I had a little rough patch there with the new election, but, uh, Lexi's back and there is mayor. I look forward to working with those folks over there. I look forward to working with Thrasher on another project.
It's pretty simple, uh, uh, be an extension agreement, a master meter agree.
Right. But there's gonna be a common customer.
Get us some, get us safety.
And we don't have to worry about.
Very good suggestion.
When it comes to their town, they run their system. They got their own treatment plant. We're just providing them the water. Which is good for them and good for us. Okay, what else do we have?
All right, we're down to, uh, employee reports. A board member employee reports. Uh, Mr. Pop, do you have anything?
I have nothing. I can think of right now. Talked enough today.
No, I'm good.
Sideman? Paul, give everything.
Paul, you have anything?
Paul, thank you for joining us on the phone. Anybody else here want to have any comments?
I've got, uh, I want, Doug's got something to talk to you about, about the water treatment expansion project.
Oh, yeah, I'll do very quickly about it. Expansion project. Remember, you signed an agreement for us to take a look at that. Um, before, when we did that agreement, I was not in possession of the, uh, gas spending reports that have been produced. I have a copy of those now. There's a very significant chance that I will be able to reduce that cost that we're going. I will take a look at those reports from, because they're a lot newer than I thought they would be. So we're gonna take a look at that. I might be able to give you guys a recommendation right off of those reports based upon what they've done.
Good deal.
Okay, so try and do your service on that. Make it a whole lot, uh, cheaper.
Well, thank God you found some records and stuff. I understand.
To, to the credit of your guys, they went and found these, delivered them to me. I have scanned them in our office. I will give you guys my prior copies of those as well. So you'll have that.
I know we have a lot of information when they built this plant and the potential of expansion to fifteen million gallons.
We have three different reports. We have the original nineteen eighty-three report. We have the, uh, also report from nineteen ninety-nine and then another one uh, from two thousand and five.
Yeah.
So all of those, we'll take a look at and see where we're at and what your capacity of your plan is.
Thank you, Doug. Anything else?
And, um, you've got a quick one there on the W B U.
Oh, yeah. I don't watch the news, guys. I'll just be honest with you. G M brought it.
Oh, this is, this is. This is the E coli thing.
Yeah, it's.
I called you. He called you.
Uh, I actually got a phone call before we come in here with the lady thinking that I was with Washington trying to corrupt everything or something, you know?
Yeah.
But anyways, you couldn't talk to her anyways.
Yeah.
Um, but what I have here is, and I've told the G M, and so water treatment plants are designed to take care of E coli.
Yeah.
The E coli is normal in rivers or anywhere. Anything that dies has E coli. Uh, fecal matter is E coli, but water treatment plants are built for that instance.
To treat the water.
So I have, I have a thing here. I don't know if you wanna go through it, read it or not, but it's here. Uh, you know, we have filtration, you have disinfection. Uh, everything is covered in a plant. There is, I don't care what the number is. Uh, this treatment plant will take care of it. That's just what they're designed for.
That's, that's our interest in this project. Uh, they have people out there, environmental people and so on, which is okay. And they're trying to look and see, I think, to identify if there's a high level of E coli in the river. It's nothing to do with us.
No.
But what they can do to minimize that at the beginning end, uh, in other words, is there something up there that's going into the river to whatever? Which is our best interest anyway. And, but it doesn't affect our plant is what we want to say. Okay? So, uh, what they're doing, it's, uh, fine, what they want to do, but doesn't affect us.
So I wanna make sure we snuff out any rumors.
That's right. Cause rumors will get out there that our water's unsafe. That's absolutely not true. Yeah. Anything else?
I was gonna say one thing.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. Last week, was it last week? When we was out at Short Line or a week before?
Last week.